I'd like to call to order the Douglas Zoni Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, January 5th at 7:02 PM. The first agenda item is a public hearing for Mark Stickney. He's requesting a variance pursuant to the MGL Chapter 48, Section 10 and Section 9.2 of the Douglas bylaws for setback relief under dimensional regulations, Appendix B, to build a garage in a VR zone district. The property is located at 62 Pond Street, MAP 117, Parcel 3. We have a confirmation that everyone's been notified by certified mail. And the public hearing is... Oh, one second, sorry. The members voting on tonight's meeting will be Mr. Fitzpatrick, Mr. Forget, Mr. Bombara, who's with us by Zoom, and myself. Okay, the public hearing is now open. Is the applicant or their representative here?
So Byron, hi, my name is Mark Stickney. I'm from Dupont Street. And Byron Andrews from Andrews Survey will be presenting a presentation. I have copies for you as well.
So Byron, just want to make sure that presenter?
Good evening, my name is Andrew Andrews, Andrew Survey engineer, and I'm representing Mr. Stickney today. And if it would be possible, I'd like to share my screen.
Yep, not a problem.
Okay, it looks like I can't say I might need permission to do that.
Give him permission, we'll all listen.
Yeah, Pat's got it.
Sorry, my remote stuff froze, I'm just... One second.
Okay.
Should be good to go.
Okay, thank you. Let's see if I can find the... I'm looking for it here. For some reason, it's showing me all kinds of things, but not my actual screen.
Mr. Andrews, we have handouts that the property owner gave us. If you want to verbally give us your presentation, we could follow along with the handout.
Okay, that's fine. So Mr. Stickney is requesting a variance for two items. One is for an overhang on the front of his house where his front door is located. And the other is for a proposed garage, 26 by 24-foot garage that he wants to put on the right side of his house at the end of his driveway. And because of the location of the house, the overhang would encroach in the front setback by 3.8 feet. And the garage would encroach on the setback by 4.2 feet. And the reason why he wants to have the variance on the overhang for the front door, I think it's obvious, you know, he'd like to have a landing for the front door. The reason why the garage would be set there and not in the zoning setback where it normally would be located is because of three reasons. If you can look on the zoning board appeals plan or the screen I'm sharing out, you can see that the right sideline is an acute angle that leans into the lot, which restricts the front sideline... Sorry, the right sideline. So that restricts things somewhat. It's compounded by the fact that there is a drainage easement and a drain pipe on the right side of the lot, about 10 feet from the property line. And the third factor, and if you can see what I'm sharing or Mr. Stickney's presentation, on the page it says topography of land right side of driveway, you can see that the land slopes away steeply on the right side near the house. And the next sheet after that kind of shows the same view from the opposite direction. And you can see even more clearly how much the topography slopes away. So in addition to the garage being restricted in size, it were me in the front setback, it would also be compromised by the fact that it would have to be a lot of fill brought in and probably also structural walls because of how far it would be over the existing grade. So both of these things would be a hardship for Mr. Stickney. And in answer to the question of how relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, the variance that he's requesting is only about 10% of the front setback. So it's something that probably wouldn't even be noticed by a layperson. It's only a percentage wise, it's only a small variance request. And in terms of other variances in the area of similar sort, there are a number of them in that subdivision. Most closely, one is 70 Pond Street for sideline setback and 44 Pond Street for sideline setback. And both those variances are equal to or greater than the one that Mr. Stickney is requesting.
One of the things with the setback is that the property line goes up to the... We have a fence, and then there's a sidewalk. And then there's a sidewalk and there's about a 10-foot area of grass to the road. So there's a 15-foot area of property, even from our front property line, to the road. So we're talking 50 feet, you need required to get 50 feet front setback there. But then you add on the other 15, you're really at 65 before you hit the road.
Yeah, but we have to go off the lot lines, not the road. Is there anything else, Mr. Andrews?
No, that's the main points of our argument.
Okay. Is there any board members that have any questions for the applicant or his engineer?
I'll give it a shot again here.
Okay, go ahead, John.
Yeah, so setbacks on the side on the right side, the planes that I have are smaller, 17.4 feet, correct?
Correct.
In the garage.
Yes.
Yeah, the garage would be within the normal sideline setback.
In the front you're discussing is that little breezeway. So you're at 46.2 and 45.8 for the garage, correct? Okay.
Right.
It's almost the same as all I got.
Oh.
Just questions.
All right, any other board members?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mike.
The garage is shifted forward to allow for that new set of stairs that's going to go in the back of the garage?
No. There is... There will be a set of stairs up the back of the garage, for sure. But what we want is that garage to be pulled forward. Because if you look at the slope, if I put it back, I'm going to hit the easement or the side variance. And also, the grading itself, you can see in some of the pictures, are quite drastic. And that means I'm going to have quite a project just to get the grading back if I push it back. And that's the whole purpose of pulling it forward. What a... I apologize for you not being able to see the actual presentation. But I think one of the things here, in terms of historical, in terms of what has been approved for variances, I do show a page where there's a history of approved variances near my property. There are 10 additions or 10 variances that have been approved since the subdivision was put in place. And then there's a map of where those are located. You can see, you can pass this around in color if you want, to show where I live and to show where those variances are. The variance I'm looking for is the percentage of the setback allotment is the smallest variance, 8%.
Fully understand that. So all we're doing is just going through... These are just very basic questions that are being asked. So I don't want to get excited about it as of yet. That's just my own personal view on it. I'm just looking at what you're presenting. And then as you're stating that you're... If you moved it back, then you're going to have a problem with the grading. But I'm looking at a picture of here, and it's a very slight pitch to that grade that goes towards the back of the house. So that's why I asked about... Did you have that forward to allow for the set of stairs? Which makes logical sense to me that you would do that to get that stairway into the back. If you slid this back towards the backyard, right? The 2.4 feet that you would pick up on that projected angle, I don't think it would... You would still would be encroaching on the front setback. So I'm just telling you the thought process I'm going through. I'm not...
If we push it back, the size of the garage, if we push it back, it will now require a side setback. And now you're into the easement area.
That's what I had just said. This is... I'm just... All I'm doing is I'm just openly thinking to you so you understand. It seemed like you were getting a little excited about it. And I just wanted to make sure that you understood. This is just questions that were going through.
If you backed it up two feet, it'd be into the sideline setback, so...
Right, right.
Plan's pretty self-explanatory.
No, I know that. I was just giving him the benefit of the doubt to explain why I was asking the questions I was asking.
All right. Is there anybody else in the room that would like to speak on this application? Okay.
The... No, forget it.
Ron, did you have anything? Mike?
No, thank you.
No? John, do you have any other questions?
No, sir, I'm all set. I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Public comment.
Do you?
Sorry.
Public comment. You have to ask for it anyway.
Public comment before you close the...
Oh, yeah, any further comments?
Public comment.
Yeah, I asked anybody in the room.
Sorry.
Yeah. All right, is there anybody else that would like to comment on this case before we close the public hearing?
I just don't know who that is.
Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by Mr. Bombara to close the public hearing.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Forget. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, public hearing is now closed. Anybody care to make a motion on this case?
Make a motion to approve case number, ZBA number 2021-19, for a front yard setback to allow the overhang over the front door as well as the garage addition proposed.
All right. And would you want to add in there about that there is a topography problem on the site? Just a comment, so...
Hard shift.
That's basically his only hardship is that he's got a topography issue. Okay.
Yeah, I guess. If that's what you want to do, we don't typically add that to our motions because of a topography. Normally, we will reference the set of plans submitted.
Yep, can do that as well.
So with that, I would like to reference the plot plan submitted by Andrews Survey dated 12/9/21. Let's see, I'm just looking to see if there's a... Plan number is S-4196. And we also have a set of drawings... Set of plans drawn by J.N. Albert &amp; Associates dated 12/8/21. Well, that's a revision date. It was drawn 12/2/21 and revised 12/8/21. It's been received by the town clerk at December 13, 2021.
Thank you, Mike. So we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Okay. Motion was seconded by Mr. Forget. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Would you like a roll call vote on that?
Yeah, because John's in...
Yeah.
Hi, Dan Heeny.
Mike Fitzpatrick, aye. Yeah. Go ahead, Ron.
Aye, Ron Borget.
Okay. So your request for relief is granted. We will get a decision drafted and get it to the town clerk as soon as possible. And then your appeal period will begin.
Great, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.
Have a good one.
Thank you.
The next agenda item is... Let me grab this one second. Next agenda item is case number 2021-20. And it is NQOW LLC. They're requesting a variance. The following was posted in the town hall as well as advertised in the Western Telegram and Gazette. And it reads as follows. "The Town of Douglas Zoni Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing beginning at 7:15 PM for NQOW LLC requesting a variance pursuant to MGL Chapter 48, Section 10 and Section 9.2 of the Douglas bylaws for setback relief under dimensional regulations, Appendix B, for a single-family structure in an RA zone district. The property is located at 1 Whiten Heights, MAP 140, Parcel 41. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the application is available for review during regular business hours in the Douglas Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass." We also have the certified mailings from the Butters. And the public hearing is now open. Is the applicant or their representative here?
Yes, good evening, my name is Jude Donovan from OHI Engineering. And we are representing the applicant in this variance application. We submitted a variance application after a long process of trying to figure out how to correct the situation that happened on the lot. Lot 12 is at the end of the subdivision where it's the open space parcel of land that was donated to the town. Inadvertently, we had the contractor put the foundation in. And he thought he was lined up with the property lines within the offsets. But it turns out, once we did the survey after the house was built and we located the foundation, that the foundation was installed slightly rotated, which meant that the corners of the foundations encroach within the side setbacks on both sides of the parcel. What we did, the contractor and developer immediately went to the town to see what kind of a solution we could come up with so that we didn't have to tear down the whole house and move the foundation. So basically, the direction that was given was that we would amaze for an A&R plan to correct the lot lines and move the open spaces, swap out a piece of land from open space and give the... Attach a bigger piece in the back for the open space so that we could get compliance with the side setback. And we could lay an even land swap with the open space parcel. So we went to town meeting for that. And it was accepted by the town meeting that that was okay to do, which was to swap a piece of the land. However, moving forward with that, town council and the member of the conservation commission remembered that there was a little-known statute in Massachusetts. And it says that if there's a parcel of land owned by a municipality that is used for open space recreation parks, such, needs to go before it gets released from the town to a private individual. It needs to go on the floor of the state legislature and get voted 2/3's vote to have this be able to be done. So given where we are in the state of affairs, I don't think this would be heard very soon with the state legislation even to get it on. So talking with Matt and Mr. Fraser, we came up with a plan to see if... I should escape, I should back up one second. This open space that we're talking about swapping the land, when we tried to do that, that was originally under our control at the beginning of the subdivision. This is a piece of open space land that was donated to the town as part of the approval of the subdivision. So we technically owned this piece of open space at one point. And at the beginning of this, in order to get lots released, we needed to deed the open space over to the conservation commission. So if it wasn't still under our ownership, we could just go into the planning board with simple A&R plan, correct the lot line adjustments, and be done with it. But because we had already given it to the town, we're kind of in this situation where now, you know, the town owns the land. We don't have control over that side. So we needed to come up with some sort of relief. And this is the avenue that was presented. And this is the avenue that we've taken to correct the situation. That's pretty much everything in a nutshell. And that adds everything to add. I've been speaking with him about this quite a bit. Just seeing if we can get relief on the right-hand side where it cuts the open space from 12 and 1/2 to 9 and 1/2 feet.
Any board members have any questions for the applicant?
No, just a comment. It's an unfortunate mess that he's in. It seems like a fairly simple solution to correct it. It's the easiest path forward anyways.
Yeah, that makes sense.
John, Germany?
His house is all done, am I correct?
Correct, yeah, that's... Yes.
So I don't take issue with what he's asking.
Okay. And there is nobody else in the room... Nobody else in the room that wants to comment? Unless you have a comment, Matt?
I do not. The applicant engineer explained the situation very well. Order of operations that took place at planning board was not how I would have done it. I would have deeded the land after the subdivision was done. So it kind of created a problem in its own right. If the board decides to grant a variance here this evening, there's still the other side property line that the engineer would have to come with an A&R plan to the planning board next week. And that would rectify both sides within a week's time.
Okay.
Just for clarity, Mr. Chairman, the side that we're going to potentially grant the variance on is abutting the conservation land? So it doesn't have any negative impact on a neighbor?
Correct. Yep, very good. All right, if we don't have any further comments, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mr. Forget to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right. And would we like to make a decision on this this evening?
Go ahead, Mike.
Might go two for two. Let's see. Just need the... Right here. Oh, no, it doesn't have the... One second, Dan. What is the application number? There isn't one on the top of mine. Oh, okay. Make a motion to approve application number 2021-20 for a sideline variance.
Okay. Now be in accordance with the plan submitted?
Yep, I missed that part. In accordance with the plan submitted. Again, this one is drawn by Andrews Survey. Plan number is S-4198. Just for the record, the house is already constructed. So there is no building plan that would be associated with this.
Great, thank you. All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Forget. Any further discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Hi, Dan Heeny.
Mike Fitzpatrick, aye.
Ron Borget, aye.
General, aye.
Okay. The request for relief is granted. Oh, yeah, right there. We'll get a decision drafted and to the town clerk as soon as we possibly can.
Great, thank you very much for your cooperation. We appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night.
We understand. Thank you.
Next agenda item would be... Well, actually, because of the situation where this... The house is completing, people are getting ready. A decision was drafted in advance. And if we want to sign it tonight, then that'll move things along for these people. I guess there's a... The homeowners are waiting to move in.
Yeah, for some time now.
Yeah, quite some time.
Just for the record, I drafted a decision with the help of the town council, who also verified the language.
I have it right here.
Matt, thanks for sending that to me. I did go through it. And those last two paragraphs, number four or five, were the most important, of course. And I'll agree.
Just for the record, Dan, the... We have made a... We voted on it earlier in the... A few years back to allow you to sign in the absence of having enough signatures from board members. And where John is remote, just been to expedite it. Just so it's on the record that even though they're going to have three signatures, it's legal to move forward.
Okay, great, thank you, Mike. All right, we'll pass this around. Just sign the last... Read the decision and sign the last few pages. Maybe a couple of minor tweaks in here.
I'll touch those up tonight. But the signature page is good.
I mean, this is all...
Sure.
It's going to...
That's fine. Usually, because holding a session in public...
Thank you.
Would undermine the discussion.
Fifty cents.
Just holding the session in public would undermine the purpose of the executive session.
Okay. John, we're going to go into executive session shortly. Do you have the ability to participate by Zoom?
Uh, no, I do not. And I talked to, um, Mr. Alders about that tonight, and he suggested, what we suggested is just my phone and your phone. Will you do that if you wish?
Okay.
I would also do the same thing for, uh, building commissioner Fraser. Also, I can have him come in on my phone.
Does anyone have a business tonight before we do this?
Uh, the minutes.
Just the minutes, John. But I don't think you've seen, have you seen a copy?
I did have a copy, yes, I do.
Okay.
And you're okay with me?
Okay. All right, as soon as we go into executive session, I will give you a call, John.
All right, sounds good.
All right.
I will do the same for the building commissioner.
Okay. So, all right, so.
Can we do it in minutes?
Yeah, let's do those.
Have you read them?
I have not.
Oh, all right.
I have not.
Not that I'm a voting member, but I have read them also, and I'm okay with them. Except for the spelling of council on item number two.
Well, why don't we see how long the executive session takes, and then we can
Okay.
deal with that. It's okay. Okay, so do I make this motion?
Uh, it doesn't have to be you, no?
No, you only make it.
So the chairman declares that holding the session in public would be detrimental, but that's the chairman's role. Anybody else can make the motion.
Oh, okay. Do you have this, Mike? Do you want it?
Oh, that's a, uh, yeah, right. Yep, the, uh, make a motion to, uh, move into executive session for the purpose of litigation and to leave executive session for the sole purpose of a German.
That's in the matter of Laramie versus the zoning board of appeals.
I need to, uh,
Yep.
Okay. That's in the matter of, uh, Laramie versus the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, so.